Call the meeting to order. By the way, we are not, don't have internet, so all those people who can't hear me don't care, but they will, if you see it tomorrow or the next day, you'll know why it wasn't live stream. So, we're having a problem with our internet. So, go ahead and call the roll.
Gandy?
Yes.
Esti?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Brassmussen?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Any changes to the agenda, council? If not, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Approval of the minutes of the August 22nd, 2022 council meeting. Approval of the September 2nd, 2022 payroll in the amount of $130,008.50. Acceptance of the environmental and franchise utility committee minutes. Acceptance of the water and sewer utility minutes from July 18th and August 22nd. Resolution approving employment in the park and recreation department. Approval of ACH payment to IR Department of Revenue in the amount of $16,160.98. Approval of total claims in the amount of $941,463.29. We had three claims greater than $75,000, which include Alliant Energy for $75,022.48. Loss in construction, $137,969.92, which was for Highway One Water Main. And WRH, Inc., $384,431.30 for wastewater treatment upgrades. I would accept a motion to approve.
Move to approve consent agenda?
Move second?
Second.
Second by Ham, was that you Judy?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you. Any discussion?
Yes, I have objection to one of the bills. So, Emergency Management Commission is funded on a per capita basis, and we typically have been paying $1 per person. We discussed this last winter, which would be $9,416. You might recall that we were asked about the per capita increase to $2 last winter, and we sent a letter to Emergency Management Commission or Agency Chairperson describing that we didn't favor that adjustment, and that we would encourage them to levy, which they have the authority to do. I think it was a dime, that they would need to levy to make up the difference. So, we didn't hear back from them, and we received a bill for $18,832, which is a $2 per capita. So, I pulled it out of the bills and didn't approve it because it's not what the council had agreed on last winter.
And so, we've had some discussion, do you want to?
We've been going back and forth.
Let's leave this discussion on this.
Here, let me just go through what I know, and then...
Okay.
So, I spent a lot of the weekend trying to figure this out, what the authority is, and I couldn't find, you might have this in front of you, the Chapter 29C?
I emailed it to everybody. I didn't give them a hard copy for tonight.
All right. The only thing we could worry about is, let me find it here. Oh, gosh. It's 17...
29C, point 17, which is on page 10 and 11.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, I had it put out already. Okay, so, there are about five ways Emergency Management can fund its operations. One of them is to levy, a special levy across the county, which is what we wrote them and encouraged them to do. B, they can do a per capita, now, I'll just read the sentence to you. B, per capita allocation funded from city and county general funds, or by a combination of city and county special levies, which may be apportioned among the member jurisdictions. So, when I read that, I don't read that as being authority to require us to pay whatever per capita they desire. I read that when they say, "Per capita allocation funded from city or county general funds has a voluntary allocation that we can accept, but not are required to pay." And if you look at the wording here, it talks about member jurisdictions, and if you look at the billing, they're billing us for membership. So, it's my understanding that some entities do not pay this per capita. I don't know who it is, because people don't want to tell me. But, and they haven't taken any action to collect the money, so I don't think they have the authority to require payment, and I don't think they have the authority to pursue non-payment. I went and visited the auditor's office to talk to Scott for about an hour today about this, and they could not give me any firm answer about whether they had authority to bill us or not. And my recommendation would be to pay the $1 that we agreed on last winter, and until we get better clarity on the second dollar, we sit and hold that money.
So, I also had a discussion with Brett Farrell today regarding this, and Erin can chime in here too. And our discussion centered around that the EMA is its own municipality, of which we all belong. And while I agree that the $2 per capita is not what we prefer, when we voted back in, I'm sorry, March, is that the date? I voted no, as well as two other entities, and we were overruled.
Just to clarify your voting, but you're talking about the EMA vote on the levy?
Yes, right, the EMA vote.
Not the whole here in the council.
Right.
The Emergency Management Commission vote.
Yes.
Right.
The Emergency Management just for the public is made up of the mayors of all the, you know, incorporated cities in Jefferson County, and the sheriff, and supervisors. So, that vote was six to three to do the $2 per levy, and again, in my view, I think it's a little bit of a Band-Aid, and that's not what we should be doing, however, you know, those of us who voted no didn't get our way. And it's, it's from Brett's perspective, and also from the state homeland security This is the appropriate action, that we, that we follow suit, because again, it's its own municipality, and that's the way it voted, so any entity can't overrule it. He did provide also some legal court rulings that are similar to this effect, and I'll leave it there.
Well, actually, I contacted the Director of the Department of Homeland Security for the state of Iowa, and he provided, what my interpretation is, is, it actually goes a little bit above where Doug was reading in the code, because it says, "For the purpose consistent with this chapter, the local emergency management agency's approved budget shall be, shall be funded by one or any combination of the following options as determined by the commission." So, the commission has the authority to say, "This is what, how we're going to do it," and you as members, because of this way the state code is, is we are a member, which is defined by the state code, we're a member of the commission. We may not agree with it, which I completely agree with Doug. I don't agree with the $2 per capita, I think it's a Band-Aid, and I think it's a easy way to double tax us and the municipalities, rather than taxing each individual person or taxing everybody once. But, the, the, the way it's read, and it says that above approved budget shall be funded, we are obligated to pay whatever the commission chooses to do. And that is also the reading how the Director from the Department of Homeland Security stated, and the Attorney General has a couple different opinions that I emailed out to everybody today also, that state the same thing.
John, do you want to weigh in at all?
Well, what has been said so far is mostly correct. There aren't any cases on this, so it hasn't been up to the Supreme Court to have that kind of a fight. The Attorney General's opinions, I was looking at them, there was one lengthy Attorney General opinion back in the early 90s, when this legislation got changed, and they split the ways you could fund it and so forth. But other than that, most of the Attorney General's opinions since then have been what they call informal or advisory letters. And the Attorney General's opinions really don't set precedence anyway. The thing about Attorney General's opinions, though, if I tell you to do something different than what the Attorney General said to do, you're on your own. You don't have that result if you follow what was said to do on the advice of council and the Attorney General's greater advice than I am. But, this is an area where I think we probably could pay the dollar and ask for a formal opinion if you wanted to. Might take them two or three months to get back to us, but the 1993 opinion, there have been some advancements on the way you can fund this since then, and also, there, not every case treats a commission as a separate municipal division, or municipality is the word that the statute uses, but they've bootstrapped onto being a municipality to be treated like one for the way you handle their levy authority. So, we could ask about that.
That was going to be my suggestion also, is that we pay the dollar and then ask the Attorney for the state of Iowa to give us an opinion on whether the EMA can compel us to pay whatever levy they decide, or allocation they decide to send our way. Because they could, in theory, pass an allocation of $10 per capita, and if it passed the commission, we would have to pay them $90,000. That doesn't make sense to me. Aside from that, the fact that they're billing the municipalities and indirectly billing the county residents. So, if you look at their budget, which we were supposed to get last spring, we just got it tonight, I don't, haven't had time to study this in detail, but do you have a copy of it?
Yeah, I gave, I gave everyone copies.
Okay.
This is a $100,000 budget, this is not a huge budget.
No, it's not a lot of money.
And I know that I spoke verbally about it, but I did not provide copies, or that you are correct.
According to this, this has been, I got my copy from the auditor's office, it's already been filed. The county contribution is $7,500. Other revenues, governmental, nothing. Then, go down here a couple lines. City, I don't know which city they're talking about, $11,000. Then you go further down, about 2/3 of the way down, I'll read through to the bottom here, let's see. Other intergovernmental revenues, I don't know if that's other entities like Batavia, Riverview, et cetera, $71,545. So, I don't see anybody on here that I can identify with certainty, except the county.
I think the, Doug, I think the $11,000, for clarification, are the cities, and this was published...
Say Fairfield?
Yes, including Fairfield and the others.
Because our bill's $18,000. Well, this...
So, timeout. This, this was proposed and published in preparation of our meeting, that was in February or March. So, this was before, when Brett published it for the public at the $1 per capita, and then the $2 per capita was passed.
So, the $1 per capita would meet their expenses?
This isn't, this isn't their budget, then?
Well, this was proposed in the very beginning that we discussed.
But it's also been filed with the auditor's...
And yes, you could say that it would, I would say you could say that it meets the budget to a degree, but we have a lot of things, and I don't have that with me, but there was a lot of things that are coming up that...
Right, and I agree.
Are not on here, and also, it's just some basic, basic annual things. That's why I say, just putting $2 on this is just, is a Band-Aid, it's not fixing the long-term problem of continued appropriate funding.
Well, I agree with you. I think, we attended two meetings last winter, and my impression is that it was woefully underfunded.
Yeah.
But I don't think doing the per capita and going against our wishes is the path to success there. So, that's why we wrote and asked them to institute a levy, which they still haven't done. So, they can do a combination, they can do a combination per capita and levying. So, I guess my recommendation is to pay the $1 now, and we can get an opinion from the Attorney General, and see if we can negotiate with the commission.
And I'll just say that I do anticipate further discussion this next budget season about the levy versus the $2 per capita. I think there will be a much more discussion on that, and so, I guess, are you making a motion?
Well, we have a motion on the table already.
Yeah, right.
So, I would amend that motion to adjust the payment to Jefferson County Emergency Management to reflect $9,416, rather than the $18,832.
In fairness, though, I mean, we, we are just one of nine votes. Our vote doesn't carry any more weight than anybody else's. And if they voted as a committee, which we agree to, whether or not we like this, which we don't, I don't know if we can, we can turn the ship around. I mean, it's not our call, I guess is what I'm saying.
Well, my whole point here is they don't have the authority to compel us to pay that amount.
It's a matter of opinion.
I don't know if I completely agree with that, to be honest with you. I don't like that they have the authority, but I think they do have the authority, so...
If I were going to ask the state Attorney General for his opinion...
Right, it could be the Attorney General's opinion is that we are, or we should pay.
We'll find out in a while. It's not going to hurt for cash flow, they have plenty of money in the bank, so it's not going to be a problem for them, we might pay half of it now, and half of it next spring, or this winter.
So, we do have a motion on the floor to accept this agenda, consent agenda.
Consent agenda, and you have a second.
Right.
So, one of them would have to amend that motion.
Well, I made a motion to amend it already.
Can't.
Sorry?
We have, in order, in order to do that, you have to have either the person that's made the motion, or seconded the motion...
Reconsider.
Reconsider to changing the motion. So, Paul made the motion, and Judy seconded it, so they would have to reconsider that before they change the motion. Or we vote on that, adjust it, and go vote that down, and then change the motion.
So, Paul, do you want to reconsider?
I'll make the motions reconsider, yes.
Then do I need the second for Judy?
I can agree to that, too, to reconsider.
Okay.
So, that would make total claims of $932,447.29, is that accurate?
Do we need a motion to make the adjustment?
Yeah.
We're reconsidering the motion to, you're making the, we're making the motion to add your recommendation.
Yeah.
So, that would be...
So, paying $1 per capita.
All right.
Which essentially is half the amount that's being asked for.
Correct. Okay, so we have corrected motion, if you will, and a second. Gandy and Ham, and is there any other discussion, then?
Yeah, I'd just like some clarification. So, we're hoping that by not paying this requested amount, then that we wouldn't have to abide by what the commission has already decided, and that they would decide something else in our favor. That they would decide to levy instead, which is what we would prefer. So, we're kind of like strong-arming them to like do something that we would like.
I would, I don't look at that way, but...
Okay. Well, no, I mean, for lack of a better term...
They have authority, where are we at this? They have authority to decide what funding mechanism they want to use. And obviously, the word levy is used in here frequently, and if they decide to do a levy, there's, the auditor will put it on the tax rolls and collect the money.
So, they didn't decide to do a levy, so we're hoping to change their mind.
They did a per capita allocation.
Right.
Which to me infers cooperation and agreement with the members.
Okay.
But they're allowed to do that, and we've already requested they do a levy, and they obviously ignored that.
Right.
So...
So, even, even our best description of this $2 per capita is that it is a Band-Aid? So, we'd like to move forward with some clarity from the Attorney General, so that perhaps we can have a better solution than a Band-Aid. And so, if we have this clarity with this opinion, we can, it may be that we indeed are paying $2 per capita, but if it, if that's, if that's not the case, we have a chance to go back to the, to the table with the rest of the members of the EMC, and decide on something that we think is fair for the city, this city...
Right.
And for all the other cities.
Right, the whole point of this is protecting the tax barrier to the city of Fairfield, because, you know, we feel that we're being disproportionately burdened with the tax. That's the discussion we had last winter.
Okay, so, Doug's right, I mean, the Emergency Management has enough money to fund themselves, and if the Attorney General comes back and says, "Yes, you should pay that, if it's in three or four months," you know, as long as it's in this fiscal year, I don't think it's going to be an issue. So, again, I think this next budget year, we're going to have a more lively discussion about this, and so, let's move forward, I guess. Any other discussion?
Yeah, I think we should have a more lively discussion the next round, and I think this message will make sure that the discussion is actually fruitful.
Yeah. Okay, so, let's go ahead and call the roll.
Gandy?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Toohill?
No.
Esti?
Yes.
Brassmussen?
Yes.
Okay, that was passed, 5 to 1. Okay. Okay, so, I guess, John will, you'll write the letter.
I'll write the letter.
Okay, thank you. We will move on to public forum and appearances. First up is John Rains and Rhonda Ellsbury from United Healthcare.
Keeps me on track. All right, so, thank you, council members, for having us this evening and allowing us time on the agenda. My name is Rhonda Ellsbury, I'm with United Healthcare. I'm a Market Manager in the Medicare and Retirement Division. I oversee the education of and the enrollments and servicing of our Medicare products here in the southeast area of Iowa, and I support local agents that are contracted with us to do that, enroll, enrollments and facilitating the servicing. So, a big part of managed care is empowering members to be a part of that healthcare choices and outcomes, and one of the ways we do that is to provide a gym membership to our members so that they can access a facility and be active if they are choosing to be. So, we know that there's a direct correlation between healthy and active members and lower healthcare costs. So, United Healthcare is not unique in offering this benefit, other companies do that, and have done so for a number of years, offering a gym membership as part of the Medicare plan. So, with over 1,000 members in Jefferson County of United Healthcare enrolled members, members continuing, continue to ask their local agents about the Roosevelt Rec Center and when it will be included in the network. Also, requests have come in through our Member Service Call Centers as well, and so often, who manages that benefit for us, they keep track of that. I wish I'd had stats for you today, but I do not. But members continue to ask when this facility will be included. Let's see here, okay, so, most small towns in southeast Iowa, their gyms are included. So, Oskaloosa, and Atonewa, and Knoxville, and Blooming, Blooming, is it Bloomfield, excuse me, Centerville, Washington, Burlington, I could keep going. So, Fairfield being the one that doesn't have their main center in. So, it's something that we're, we're continuing to pursue, because we sure would love to have them included. Other types of facilities right now that are also joining are like yoga studios and strength training and things like that. Again, getting back to the fact that we just understand as people are active and being a part of their healthcare, we understand that that's helping with health outcomes, and helping keeping constituents healthier as well. So, there's two good proposals on the table right now. I hope you guys have that packet in front of you. If you don't, I will have to articulate verbally what that is. It came in with our request to be on the agenda today. So, if you don't have it, then I will just verbally articulate it. So, the two proposals would be a flat rate per month, so a $20 per member per month, as long as one of those members comes to the gym. And the current rate for seniors at the rec center is $25. I understand maybe for a couple, it's 20, so we'll have to check those facts with Calvin later, if that's true. So, the current proposal on the table is $20 for that flat rate. But the other option I'd really like to focus on is the pay per visit, and that's $5 per visit, per member, up to 25 a month. So, you know, that's kind of something we want to focus on, because if those members are utilizing their benefit and coming at least five times, and we've had several members tell us they would do that, the gym would be collecting a $25 fee then. That's the, that's the current membership, so hopefully that would remove any argument or worry of loss. With these proposals also comes a signing bonus. So, if the rec center or the town would agree to a two-year contract, there'll be a $7,500 signing bonus. If you go with just a one-year contract, which expires at the end of next year, then it's a $3,000 signing bonus. Plus, we give them what's called the Veritap system, so it's a very small gadget that sits on the front desk at the rec center, and this is how members can check in with their phone, or a QR code that's given to them. So, it's automatic checking in, automatic reporting back to United Healthcare, and an automatic payment to the bank that's in the contract if signed. So, it would be not an administrative burden for the staff at the center. And then, if we're allotted time to discuss the contract here in a few minutes, I can answer questions, or give examples of potential utilization and cost. But next, I did want to give John some time as well, John Wayne's, or Ray, excuse me, a longtime member here in the community and a business owner, so that he can also provide some insight and the financial aspects of the proposal.
May I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Did you say there's a contract involved?
Yes, sir.
Did you provide us a copy of the contract?
If we decide on one, yes, and if you approve it, we will.
Sure, there's just a proposal typed up and brief.
So, we'd have a chance to review the contract?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Review requirement.
We did have a copy of the contract a few months ago when we first saw this, but I, I didn't read it all, of course. So, I did have a question about these proposals. One of, in proposal number two, which is Option A, two-year contract, it says, "Take out early termination fee language, there's a $7,500 signing bonus," and Option B, one year contract, keep early termination fee language, $3,000 signing bonus.
Yeah.
So, there's a cost to the city if we do it for determination?
There's an opportunity loss if you do it that way, yes. But she'll get into the nuts and bolts of that specific in just a second. What I want to do is just present the finance part, and you can understand how this is working. So, first of all, thank you, Rhonda, for coming, driving all the way from the Quad Cities and spending the night in Fairfield, and thank you, Town Council, for giving us a chance to present on behalf of a lot of members in Jefferson County. I have 500 clients in Jefferson County. I've met with over 2,000 Iowa beneficiaries, and I'm familiar with the things that involve seniors. And what I want to do is just let you understand where the money's coming from. So, Medicare Advantage approves gym memberships now, and this started in 1997, when the US government actuaries reported, it cost the federal government about 800 bucks per month, per person, when averaged out, to administer Medicare benefits. With this information, the executive branch in 1997 created Medicare Choice Plus, now called Medicare Advantage, as a way to outsource Medicare administration to private insurance companies, to see if it would be more efficient. This experiment was not only more efficient, it was extremely successful. Today, about 30 million Americans have elected Medicare Advantage, which is about half of all the Medicare beneficiaries. So, when someone signs up for Medicare Advantage, the federal government pays a private insurance company just over $800 a month to administer the individual's Medicare benefits. Private insurance... Private insurance companies like United Healthcare, Aetna, Humana, compete to design and offer more competitive benefit packages for its members. This is how funding the gym memberships originated 15 years ago. And today, between 80 and 90% of all the counties in Iowa in the United States participate with Medicare Advantage gym memberships. So why does the government approve of having gym memberships as a benefit for Medicare Advantage members, you might ask? Well, studies show two major issues affecting the mental and physical health of seniors. Age 65 and older are social isolation, which often leads to depression, and cognitive decline. Participation in gym memberships positively benefits both of these. And you ask, well, why don't all seniors have gym memberships? For the United States citizens aged 65 and older, studies show 4% consider themselves financially independent, 16% consider themselves financially comfortable, 80% consider themselves financially challenged to meet basic expenses. In other words, about 80% of seniors feel they can't afford a gym membership. And this percentage was confirmed in my book of business. I did an email survey two weeks ago. So in summary, approval of the proposal would, number one, bring in an estimated 80 to 100 new memberships to the Cambridge Rec Center, which would mean an extra $20,000 to $30,000 annually is coming from outside the community into the community. Number two, create a money multiplier effect in Jefferson County as funds flowing into the Cambridge Rec Center is redistributed in terms of hiring additional support staff and other ways. And three, provide another lifestyle enticement to encourage new seniors to move into Jefferson County, again, creating a money multiplier effect. So it's my understanding that the Cambridge Rec Center is currently underfunded, understaffed, and underutilized. This proposal, to me, is an ideal way to address all three issues. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, John.
Now we'll answer questions.
You see standing. Counsel, what questions do you have? I think one of the questions that came up when I was in a discussion was if they chose the $20 per member, and ours is normally $25, and my understanding is $35 if they use the pool and gym, could the city bill for that deficit between that $20 and the $5 and $35?
Really good question. And if the Cambridge administration feels that there'll be greater revenue going this route, we can go that route. Otherwise, if you go the route of per head admission, it's exactly the same. It's all money coming in, and there's no potential loss. But let's look at the other way and why what you just said might mean more revenue to the rec center. So it's our experience all across the country that even though we offer free gym memberships, about 20% will take care of it. It's kind of like if you buy an exercise machine, you use it for two weeks, and it sits in your garage for 10 years gathering dust. We want to encourage seniors to use this, and we do our best, but about 20% we know will really take advantage of it. So if you go the route of $20 per month flat fee, and most people aren't even showing up, then it's cash flow positive. Our experience, the numbers are, if we get 100 new members, and that's what we anticipate, about 70 will already have a membership. Excuse me, I got it backwards. 100 new members, 100 new members, 70% will be new members, and 30% will already have a membership. So if we look at the numbers, and if you have 100 new members, and you take the 100 new members, 30 of them, you're losing $5, that's 150 per month. 70 of them, you're getting $20 you didn't have, which is 1,400 a month. So you're positive 1,250 a month. Whereas if you go the other route and do the $5 permission and nobody's showing up, or maybe once or twice, then you're not actually coming out as good cash flow. So those were the numbers that we had.
So it sounds like you're suggesting that the $20 per member.
In our judgment, that would be the best for the rec center's finances. And it would also give the ones that are serious about coming to the rec center, there's no limit, they can come as much as they want. But believe me, it's not many that would do that. And we wish there were, it's just not human nature.
And just to clarify, that $20 would include access to the pool or?
Only one. They have to choose. Because most people that can afford the rec center, and the numbers that I got from the respondees when I did the thing was approximately 10% of the ones that wanted to come to the rec center basically could afford it in what they were thinking. Whereas the ones that were already members of the rec center, 90% of them were in the financially independent group. So chances are the ones that already are members of rec center, they don't mind paying 35 or 45 to get the whole thing as opposed to just getting the free membership.
Is Calvin here?
Yeah.
He can answer questions about fees and how it's split. There's two sides plus the combo.
Yeah, okay, I'll just come up here a little bit.
Just to clarify to everybody.
Not trying to push you out of the way or anything like that. So, yeah, so with the senior rate, if you just want a rec or pool, it's $25 a month. Now, if you want rec and pool, which would be considered our combo membership, then you'd be at $35 a month.
So.
Which is a discount from, you know, our normal rate of 29, 39.
So the $20 a month that's proposed, is that including a combo, is that a combo or just a rec center?
I think just one side.
Okay, so the offer, the proposal is, what is being offered now is what we now offer at the rec center is $25 a month for a service for programs that you're suggesting that the rec center offer at $20 a month. So the difference is $5 per month, is that right?
Or the pay-per-view, or pay-per-visit.
Right, but then we're talking about the $20 a month proposal, different $5 per month, correct? Can you walk me through a senior who elects this program? Are they first, are they first a client of yours?
No.
They're not a customer?
She's with United Healthcare. I'm independent.
Okay, so are they first a customer of United Health?
Yes.
This proposal, yes.
So they're first a customer of United Health. They first sign up, okay. So walk me through, they become a customer of United Health. They're paying a premium, is that correct?
No.
No, these programs have zero premium.
Okay, so they sign up, there's no cost to the senior. What are the next steps, according to your proposal, $20 a month, where they're allowed, they're going to be using the services at the rec center? The pool and/or the rec center?
So if they wanted to utilize it and the rec center was in the network, right, they would go to front desk and certainly sign up, as if any paying member would. And then they'll be given instruction on how to sign in when they come and visit the gym. So let's say two weeks later, they come in, they scan their phone or however, we can give them a QR code too if they can't use their smartphone. They go utilize the pool, they go back home. So that month, they're just going to utilize the gym or the pool, because they can just choose one. The other $10 will be billed to the member, and that's allowed for our contract if the gym wanted to collect on that other fee. So that's how that'll be handled. And then, so let's say Becky is coming five times that month, and she's scanning in five times. Then the gym will be paid at the end of the month, $20 for Becky going.
So on the other side, what is the gym doing? What is the rec center doing? So the senior comes in and they're scanning what now?
They'll use their smartphone if they know how to use that and the QR code, and they scan this. It's called a Veritap system.
So United Health, United Health will have its own?
Providing that.
You're providing your own technology at the rec center on the rec center front desk, okay.
Yes.
So what is the rec center's role in that? What are they doing?
Just to welcome them and allow the members to utilize the pool if that's what they're coming to do and the facilities to get cleaned up and go on for the day.
Are there any other administrative tasks the rec center has to undertake?
No.
How is the rec center paid, again?
Through this Veritap system, right, so it automatically reports the visits back to United Healthcare. And then at the end of the month, based on the contract, those visits are tallied, and then a payment is made automatically through the contracting system. The town council or the rec center would let us know which bank account to deposit that money into. So it's just automatic. There's no handholding here.
Okay, but I think what you're saying is the rec center is giving information, they have to keep a tally and report the information to United Healthcare?
This Veritap system actually does it, so the rec center, the staff, nope. It's just all automatic, beep, 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 and we'll know. Calvin has the ability to log into this system, the Veritap, if he wanted to, weekly, and see how many people have come and utilized it, and at the end of the month, run his own reports if he would like. So that when the payment does come in, he could sort of say, yep, that's what I was expecting.
So, I'm sorry, I'm asking more questions, but Calvin, could you speak to, do you, I mean, I'm just trying to understand what the, what effort the rec center would have to undertake as you understand it.
Right.
You run the rec center, what do you see being the process from yourself?
I mean, obviously, if there was any technological issues or anything like that, one of the local reps, whether it be Mr. Rains or Nikki back there, we would definitely need to have contact information available right there at the front desk. Just because, you know, we're obviously not familiar with the system. We have our own software system that we use over there. So if there's any issues about it, you know, whoever's working behind the front desk is going to receive that complaint or question on, you know, if we have issues with it. So I could see where, you know, we would definitely want to be able to have one of the local representatives available for that individual to get ahold of them if they're having issues with their scanning. The other thing would be, so since it's a one-side type of deal, whether it's either pool or rec, is that when somebody scans in, we'll need to know, are they pool or are they rec? And, you know, because we could run into a scenario where somebody scans in, goes and swims, and then goes down and works out on the machines or something like that, too. So we would need to have something that kind of alerts or pops up on the system that might say just either P or G for gym, something like that. So that's where I see our role being with, you know, arguing with it.
This is one of the problems, I think, is that the system that the insurance company is offering is independent of our system. So when I go down there and I scan my card and it malfunctions for some reason, they can look me up on their system and confirm that I have allowance to go in. They don't have that, you won't have that access when you have the insurance company people come in and scan it?
You sure will. So certainly if the Veritap system's not going to work, I'll be happy to show up with day one or whatever, get it going, scan it myself, or whatever we have to do to make sure it's working. However, if for some reason, technology fails, we know that that happens, there is a way that staff could go into what's called RenewActive.com, and they can enter their code and be able to verify people's eligibility. So there'd be a little bit of a workaround, just extra work on the staff.
It doesn't happen very often, but it might happen.
It could, yeah, technology sometimes can fail. But yeah, I'd be willing to show up, Calvin, especially on the first day, and ensure that system's working and.
So the insurance company keeps tracks of attendance, but we don't have a record of that attendance?
You do.
You do?
Yeah, Calvin certainly will, and so he could run weekly or monthly reports if he wanted to and bring back to the council or whatever they ask would be. Yep, that's available.
Okay, and then Rebecca, when the money comes into the bank, what do you have to do with it?
Yeah, we would have to have a summary of what that included. We would have to do a journal entry to a.
How much work is it that you would have to do?
Just every month, and we do it with the parking rack ACHs also. We would just have to make a journal entry to make sure that the books match what's going into the bank.
Calvin, do clients pay ahead or behind, currently?
Currently, like if somebody comes in with?
Yeah, they're paying ahead, aren't they?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
So this is a behind payment?
Yes, yeah, so this, I guess, technically be behind, but yeah, yeah. So our other members who, you know, would not qualify for the program, you know, when they scan in, if they're overdue, there's a little alert, and then they pay right there for their membership.
And Sean, you said you're independent, so you have other insurance companies. Do they have the same program, and then what?
Well, United Healthcare dominates Medicare Advantage, and I try not to be biased, but that's just the facts. And so, and you know, have the numbers. Jefferson County, my guess is three quarters are United Healthcare, and then?
Yeah, and they have similar systems, so you maybe have heard of Silver Sneakers, right? It's the same type of thing. It's a reimbursement too, based on visits to the gym.
But they'll need to come and do their proposal, and you already know what we're paying, so I would bargain them.
On membership, I was going to maybe tackle that as, so in Jefferson County, we have 1,039 members. Our next, I hate to call them competitor, but it's true. So Aetna only has 285 members, right, in Jefferson County. Humana having 151 members, and then the new people to town, Blue Cross Blue Shield, with their Advantage Plan, 52 members. So knowing that there's only a 6% or 7% utilization in these gym memberships anyway, it would be surprising to me, I guess, if there was proposals coming to you with those carriers that have very few enrollments.
Would those carriers offer this as an incentive? In other words, in order to compete with United Healthcare?
No.
Would they offer as an incentive, okay, they're offering a membership at your local rec center, we'll do the same thing?
They are competing in terms of getting the business. Yes, they do want to have more memberships, and yes, they are going to be competing. And when they hear that United Healthcare has contract, they're certainly going to come in and propose to have the same thing that we are just proposing with United Healthcare.
Sure, but may I insert that? We've gone back and forth with Calvin a little bit on different ideas and proposals over the last few years. Industry-wide, this is how it's offered. It's a pay-per-visit or it's a flat rate. And so it sounds like we're pretty in line with what other carriers are doing as well. And to me, it would not be a calling chip. We've successfully enrolled 1,039 members without the rec center. And so we want the rec center, we do, our members truly want it. But no, that shouldn't be a calling card that they would come in and get the rec center by offering you guys, I don't know, 100 a month per member, and then we're not in. We'll still keep doing the great things we're doing for our members.
What if they offered the same thing?
Well, that won't affect us. If they offer more, then we're going to need to come back and offer more.
Wouldn't that affect the rec center?
Would it?
The rec center's approving this thing.
If the rec center approved this, at this proposal, and another insurance company came in, offered exactly the same proposal, would there be a reason why we would not approve that?
No.
So I'm just looking at the situation where you have, say, three or four insurance companies with their own technology at the rec center's desk. Is that possible? That happen?
It can happen.
It could happen. Again, our membership is kind of men's skill right now, but that could happen.
That could happen, so, you know.
No, that won't happen. All Silver Sneakers, one system. All Silver Sneakers is one system. But remember, all the communities around here are doing this, right? So they're working with it, and are Silver Sneakers or whoever that's come to their doorstep. So many communities here in Iowa participate with multiple carriers, and they pull it off effectively.
That'll be, can we have people not talk about?
Yeah, Nikki, you've got to, hang on, because nobody's going to hear you from back there.
Is she representative?
Yes.
Okay, anyways, I was going to point out that, let's say we adopt this system. Then someone who has Blue Cross Blue Shield and wants Silver Sneakers, but we don't have that, they're going to be at the desk pounding their fists wanting to know why we don't have that system also for them, because they have a different insurance company. And I don't know how many, I mean, there's about six insurance companies offering plans in Jefferson County. I'm imagining that all of them offer some kind of health club benefit.
Nikki, can you come up and?
Look at them all, but at least.
And address his issue?
At least Blue Cross Blue Shield does as well.
And then, you know, I'd like to just take another couple of questions, and maybe this should be referred to committee to really flesh it out.
I was going to ask.
So there's four companies that do, and one is United. We used to have Silver Sneakers, and when I first.
You need to come closer to the microphone.
When I first went into meeting with Calvin, it was seven or eight years ago, and it was Silver Sneakers back then. And then United split off from Silver Sneakers and started their own RenewActive. But the other three companies, who have much fewer enrollees than we do, all use Silver Sneakers, all of them. That's not going to change.
So you're saying there's only two?
And they have one system. So if Blue Cross, Aetna, and Humana do convince you, personally, I don't think they're going to offer the amount of money that United is. That's my personal opinion. But if they did come up with the right amount of money, they would come in and have a swipe system. But it would be one other swipe system, not three other swipe systems.
Okay.
Silver Sneakers is managed by a third party, just like RenewActive is managed by third-party vendors. They're not all managed by the individual insurance company.
So you're saying if two or three other insurance companies all offered Silver Sneakers, we'd only have one check-in for all three companies?
Yeah, right, yeah. But, you know, one of the reasons why it's taken us so long.
So it'd also be another transfer for Rebecca to have to make in journal entry.
But one of the reasons, quite honestly, it's taken us so long to get to this point is we had to convince United to come up with more money because Silver Sneakers doesn't offer very much money. So lagged on for quite a number of years.
Yeah, go ahead.
I do have one question. You.
You said that if a member comes in and swipes their card at the end of the month, if we pick the monthly plan or whatever, we get paid the twenty dollars regardless of how many times they come. If a member does not come in and swipe his card during that month, are we still collecting twenty dollars on that member? No. So the, now, what he said was the seventy, eighty, that the seventy percent of the people that aren't going to use it, we're still going to collect the twenty dollars, so it's money ahead.
Uh, a mistake.
But that's different than what you're saying, right?
A mistake, yeah. Yeah, they have to utilize the benefit, John.
At least once?
Mm-hmm, at least one time.
So they don't come in, we're not collecting the twenty dollars on them?
Correct.
Where members right now, they're not using it, we are collecting money on them?
That's true.
Okay, that's what I wanted to find out.
Yeah, I just wanted to emphasize also, my understanding is that married couples only are charged twenty. So that would be at break even. And I have a lot of clients who are married who are coming in together, so you're at a break even.
Calvin can answer that question. Do we have a discount for married couples?
Not, we, we do, yeah. We do have a couples' membership, yes.
So Calvin said we have a couples' membership.
Is it twenty dollars a couple?
No, it is not twenty dollars a couple.
Twenty dollars a person.
Twenty each, yes.
Right, okay.
So that's a break...
The membership before.
That would be a break even situation. So when you take into effect your bonus that you're getting, it's going to make up for the five-dollar loss. It's only for the single people that that would be needed for.
So council, do you want to flesh this out, it ways and means, or a few more questions, or do you want to move forward?
I think no one, I, I don't dispute, I don't think no one can dispute the value of a gym membership for seniors. I certainly appreciate it, but, but they're...
They would like to talk to you about their personal experiences.
Right, right, but, but at the same time, I think...
We're not going to do that tonight. We don't have the time.
Exactly. I think, I do think it was, was a closer look by the appropriate committee so we can study perhaps the proposed contract, because that's going to be central. So I would, I would, I would move that the matter be referred to, with the appropriate committee, ways and means?
I would second that.
Yeah, ways and means, that's where I would go.
Can we be in part of any, uh, committee meetings?
Yeah, yeah, they're open to the public.
Well, they're open to the public, whether...
Yep. Yep, okay, so we have a motion and a second to move this to ways and means. Any other discussion about that? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same side? Okay, so we'll move it to ways and means, flush out the ideas, bring contracts, they can flush that out and then bring it back to council. I think that's a appropriate way to move forward. Uh, thank you for your patience, Matt. Um, next is Fairfield Community Schools' principal introduction and Paul.
Thank you, mayor.
John, could you, uh, send both versions of your contract that you talked about to city administrators so that we can, he can get it to this committee?
Okay, great, thank you. Go ahead, Paul.
Thank you, mayor. I've been practicing all night. I hope I get this right. I had an opportunity to speak with our new Fairfield High School principal last week along with our superintendent of public schools, Dr. Lori Knoll. Uh, it was a very engaging, very interesting conversation. And also, there was a tremendous, tremendously inspiring article, at least from my point of view, in the Fairfield, um, or the Southeastside Union, a couple of weeks ago, about our new principal. Thought we'd take the opportunity to introduce him to our council and through the council to our city. Um, he has some interesting things to say, I think worthwhile. Public education is so important in our city. And I'd like to introduce Dr. Lori Knoll, who will then introduce, please, Dr., uh, Mr., Principal of High School. I have to pronounce it now. Mr. A.D.
Pompezai.
Yes. What did I say? Pompezai. I got nervous. Pompezai. Thank you, Dr. Knoll.
Thank you. Thank you first for, um, letting us come and just give you some information about our district. I told council member Gandy that I really wanted to just give some bragging rights that, of our district that you might not know and the community may not know. So did you know that we have graduates that attend Cornell, Vanderbilt, University of Pennsylvania, and Columbia? Isn't that awesome to think about that? But we also have ones that go to you and I, University of Iowa and Iowa State. And we have ones that attend Indian Hills and Kirkwood. So a vast amount of kids that go to many different things after postgraduate. We also have kids that go right into the workforce. And so we are filling our areas in our community with our students, getting that work-to-school experience right here. So those are some awesome things that are happening at that level. And then a little bit about our district. Do you know that we have, going to get it right here, three hundred and fifty-nine square miles that we transport eight hundred kids daily to and from school? That's huge. And you don't hear about that a lot. We have ninety-five acres of land that we take care of within our district. We serve two-hundred-and-forty-seven-thousand-six-hundred-and-twenty meals just last year in our food service. I say it's the best restaurant in town. And our food service director is nationally and state-recognized for all of her work. We, um, she's working with, um, school to food and we're getting locally grown food right in our district for our kids to eat. We have teachers that are nationally board-certified that are teaching our students. We have, um, our students, um, have supports in mental health and therapeutic support. And that is showing in our, um, school, uh, safety report that the students report on, that they were ninety-two percent felt safe in school as compared to other schools around us that were at eighty-seven percent. So we have so many amazing things that are happening in our district. And just this opportunity to get in front of you and to say, hey, Fairfield Community School District is doing amazing things. And we're here to serve you and to serve our students and our community. So that was my opportunity, so thank you, um, to share and brag. So then I'd like to, um, brag on our new principal at our high school. He is here, he's coming, um, again, state-recognized, uh, principal of the year. And his name is A.D. Pompezai. And we are so excited to have him here. And his assistant, um, principal, um, slash student coordinator is Mallory Mann. So together, they're making a dynamic duo team. And they are doing a lot of wonderful things at the high school. So I will let him take over and share.
Again, thank you, Dr. Knoll and Councilman Gandy, for this invitation. And to city council members, I've met so, uh, several of you, Mayor Boyd. Um, I look forward to collaborate and work with you in any way possible to support our students and our community. And then to our Fairfield community, um, our adopted new home. Um, thank you for being part of what makes Fairfield so special. Um, we knew that when we considered moving to Fairfield and had opportunity to study Fairfield at school, the city. Uh, there are many, many things. But one of those things is certainly, um, the call for support, uh, collaboration. And I experienced it immediately, that the, the amount of community support that's there for our schools. And that's, uh, our hope moving forward. So tonight, I just wanted to share with you, um, uh, you know, a message, and it's three parts. And that first part is what I've asked our staff to do, uh, and then I modeled it. And that is begin with the why. Simon Sagnick, as well as other, uh, leadership researchers, make it very clear when we, um, as leaders, as teachers, and as a city, if we understand our why and we clearly can articulate that and have a moral imperative behind that why, it is life-changing and transformative. So my first message is about gratitude. And the gratitude not only that we have, uh, for the support of the city and the families, but a personal story of why I do what I do and why I'm so inspired to serve and work and live here in Fairfield. And that is because, as you might have read, uh, in the paper, uh, I'm the product, okay? I'm such gratitude for this state and for this country. Uh, my father was a member of the Royal Lao Army, um, recruited very early in his career. Uh, and then as a captain of the Royal Lao Army, was brought here, uh, the, one month after I was born in nineteen-seventy-two, um, to train with the US Army, first in, uh, English School, then Armor School, then he went to Ranger School and ultimately was a hundred-first airborne assault. And his responsibility, along with the other, uh, um, officers of, of the Royal Lao Army, Cambodia, Thailand, and Vietnam, go back and, uh, what, uh, they called the "vitalization" of the war in Southeast Asia. So my father sought, fought that secret war in Northern Laos, uh, training indigenous people, okay, to fight and replace American soldiers, rescue American pilots, and do air assaults, uh, there to infiltrate the, make, make, um, Ho Chi Minh Trail. Ultimately, um, Laos collapsed, just like, uh, South Vietnam. And my father was a political prisoner, captured and tortured and, um, and along with, uh, uh, you know, millions of other Southeast Asians fleeing, um, not only the killing fields of Cambodia, but certainly our own genocide in our homeland. If it wasn't for our late governor Robert D. Ray and Ambassador Quinn, not because they had to, not because it was politically convenient, but it was their moral imperative. And they made a call, a call to Iowans, a call to cities like Fairfield. Mine was a, first you might have met this church in Alta, Iowa. Small farming community, okay, at that time with only fifteen-hundred students, um, fifteen-hundred people, um, predominantly, uh, white and farming and rural. And here we were, um, a family of eight people sponsored by the church, literally came with nothing but the clothes. Uh, I had a T-shirt and shorts and flip-flop. And my dad had his army duffel bag, uh, just with a change of clothes. But we started this life in nineteen-seventy-nine. And because of that, I know the power of what communities and schools and families, when we have a commitment, uh, to serving our children and giving them hope and a better opportunity, it is transformative. It changes lives. So watching you tonight, I was enthroned, because I'm a nationally board-certified, uh, US history teacher and, and, uh, world studies, and I just love the civic engagement. And so part of that then is this call, this gratitude. I want to say thank you, because what we do every day and why I inspire our teachers to do is not only to share their own why, but also, okay, to transmit and have an opportunity to influence children beyond their own children in the classrooms. And so having that said, I've just noticed some things and I ask, okay, what is your why? What is Fairfield's why? I've noticed some of these things and they're evident and they're notable and it's things that we should be proud of. But perhaps some of these whys that I have noticed is to have a healthy and vibrant community that's attractive to the quality of life and have great schools and a commitment to continue, uh, for continuous, continuous improvement. Your beautiful parks, okay, trails, I've yet to encompass the entire city, uh, and the recreation. But one thing that is very, very dear and fond to my family and, and, and another major why we chose Fairfield is my wife is a music educator for the district. Um, she's a church music director as well. So we love the fine arts, okay, and the music and the theater. And we look forward to contributing to that part of our civic life. But also, one of the hallmarks is that the graciousness and hospitality, okay, that we have felt as a family. Uh, we have a six-year-old who's a, a second grader at Pence. And so the, the why is evident, okay? And when we work together to not only share that why and prove that quality of life, we also understand that schools and cities and communities, we can also be a rambunctious family, okay? And it's no different, okay, especially in the past three years. Uh, it is very, very clear across our nation, but here in our own community, we are calling for unity and support for our educators. Um, I made it very clear to all of our students, and I hope it's evident every single day, is that our educators, more now than ever, have such an unbelie- challenging time to be an educator than many have left us. We have a shortage of subs, a shortage of teachers. And I walked into a classroom the other day, because it's the first one, that, uh, another staff member came and got me. And they said, hey, Mr. Pompezai, can you stop in this class? Because it's the end-of-day Friday, okay, and the kids are really, uh, um, uh, giving this sub a hard time. I immediately walked in that classroom and made it very clear that this job is difficult enough and we want the very best for you. But our substitutes alone, it's almost a volunteer basis based upon, you know, the, the pay that we provide. And we have struggles with them because they don't want to come to an environment where they don't feel safe and feel welcome and feel supported. And so I'm asking for a call of unity, a call of support, and have real meaningful, uh, collaborations with our schools. And so some of those collaborations, uh, you know, can be, um, very much opening your businesses and your, your, um, uh, 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 corporations to our students to have real impactful, uh, impactful internship experiences. Uh, I have a, uh, a, a history of, in my other schools, creating pre-apprenticeships and registered, registered apprenticeship programs across all the skilled trades, but all, but we can even go so far as go into actually actual serious sciences and other things. That part of it is also allowing our students to see what the great opportunities there are here right in our community. Because I make no shame about recruiting people to our community, and, but especially former Trojans. Um, I, at every opportunity I can, I try to recruit them back. And so I want to close with this, is that as some of you may have heard, my sixty-second spot, uh, on one oh-four-point-three, um, it's just one of the fun things I, I, I get to do and you'll hear other administrators. But I've been sharing this message of unity and it's focused on this. One Fairfield, one school, one community. And here was a part of that message. As one Fairfield, where aligned best practices achieve our goals of student and staff wellness, exceptional student achievement, and being great stewards of our community resources, we have a comprehensive professional learning plan focused on trauma-informed care practices and built-in personal wellness days for our educators. We invite you to join our Trojan family, our Fairfield family, as professional educators where we value investing your well-being. Fairfield is one school devoted to increasing student achievement through high-quality instruction, small and intimate class sizes, innovative programming. And Fairfield, all students are leaders and we have a sense of belonging and are involved in a variety of extracurricular activities. And lastly, Fairfield is one unified community devoted to the excellence of our students and our school. Come to Fairfield, be part of a vibrant community, to live, work, and play. So I ask you, when we open our doors of collaboration and partnership with the city, uh, with other entities and community members, and we extend that invitation. So some of those invitations, I include, would you consider attending? For instance, um, uh, uh, being, uh, volunteers in terms of being tutoring for our students, reading to our kids, and then share our good news and celebrate our students and our staff. So next Friday, you have an opportunity and everyone in the city council and staff are invited to attend the One Fairfield Luncheon. Is one example of us getting that great message out. So September twenty-third, sponsored by Iowa State Bank, come and have a great, uh, lunch at the Country Club. And the pro, some of the proceeds, uh, go back to our Booster Club. And so I invite you to attend that on September twenty-third. There'll be several others throughout the season, because we have been fortunate with the generosity of our businesses and corporations. And we'll have six more luncheons that are fully sponsored. So free lunch and celebrate our kids. And then lastly, come and be, uh, a part. Uh, pretty soon, we'll be calling, uh, putting together an advisory task force to help guide our next bond referendum. Um, help us communicate the why behind this bond referendum and engage our community on this very, very important dialogue. And so, uh, in closing, I'm A.D. Pompezai, Principal of Fairfield High School, inviting you to be a member of One Fairfield. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Knoll.
And I'm going to close with, um, I have a flyer for you that has a lot of the information and contact information if you want to become, uh, one of our Fairfield ambassadors and help us with volunteering or sponsoring a student, there are ways to do that. So I will pass those around. And, uh, we'd love to see you at any activities and support our kids, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, we will move on to the real business?
No, we got one more.
We got one more? Oh, sorry, I almost passed it up.
Yeah.
I was getting anxious. Sorry, sorry. Uh, so yes, we have, uh, our Depot House representatives to talk about a street closure and an event that you're planning, so please come to the mic and introduce yourselves.
Um, hi, um, what a hard act to follow. Thank you so much for having us on the agenda today. I'm Whitney K. Mac. Um, I'm a partner or one of the owners at Depot House, my partner, Servaire. Um, I'm also the head chef at the Fairfield Country Club. Uh, I recognize some of you, probably cooked for you in the back. Um, we would like to request to close off the street at Depot House to ensure the safety of all our guests at a really special arts and, um, music event we're hosting, um, this Saturday. Um, we moved here in twenty-nineteen from New York City with our two small children. Um, and we're really, and we started Depot House as our business. Um, the event will be a music and arts festival. Um, it's our first all-ages and family-friendly event. Um, as you guys know, the main entrance of Depot House is on Fourth Street. It's a busy street, um, without a crosswalk. Um, and our parking lot runs along the side of the building. Um, and our parking lot runs along the side of the building on Depot Avenue. Um, we would love the city's support to close this off from traffic, um, and just make the event a safe and fun event for the people of Fairfield.
Could, could we have a Chief Thomas?
Yeah.
Address the traffic concerns.
Traffic patterns. Could you tell us?
Are, are you ready? Could you speak to that?
We did map this morning and because it's Depot and not one of the main, like, Fourth Street, um, I think I closed it previously too, but.
Well, they would close Fourth Street and one block.
That we received just had Depot.
Up to the railroad tracks, back one block?
It's only from the, um, the Fourth Street from the Depot Avenue, uh, towards the Fifth Street. So it's just going to be from the railroad to the.
One fourth. And then Depot along the side of the corner. So it's an L right around the depot.
Yeah.
That's what they want to close.
Oh, it's there.
Yeah, there's. You won't interfere with the railroad crossings, correct?
No.
Correct.
We don't see an issue with that. I, everybody knows it's going to be a busy weekend with the Qantas kid's day and, and several car showing and, um, so we've added this to our list. We've already planned on your folks' approval. So we don't see an issue with.
Okay. So would we approve the closure as requested?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to close as requested. Any other discussion? All those in favor saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Okay, thank you. Good luck. And by the way, you want to, you want to tell who you're related to? Cause you'll probably know some of those people.
Sure, I'm Jim Bell's niece. And Jim and Ginger Bell. Thank you, thank you.
I thought that should be.
Thank you very much.
Most people know Jim and Ginger. And welcome to Fairfield, by the way.
Thank you so much.
Okay, now we will go to resolution action items and ordinances. The first action item is consideration of resilient Iowa community's assessment. And I understand, Doug, you're going to discuss this and is this correct or is this?
I don't know.
I can address it too. Um, so we already had the community ass, input assessment and that was two Saturdays ago, I think. But really what we need for you and I is the city to come together. So, um, the Environmental and Franchise Utilities Committee and then perhaps Erin as well and maybe even Melanie. So we can discuss the, so we can go through the RIC assessment piece by piece and really see what city policies we have in place. Because although the community assessment was really beneficial, it doesn't really address the questions that we need to answer regarding city policy. So I.
Found out after the fact that they call it resilient community, but they really want uh, city-specific um, behaviors and activities that have occurred in this assessment. So the community assessment is very valuable, but they want us to trim it down and just do uh, what the city's been involved with. So for example, if you have a rain barrel program, if some residential section has a rain barrel, it doesn't count. We gotta, it's gotta be on a city building, for example, for that portion of the assessment.
Okay, so you're just going to take this to committee and go through it. Is that correct? Is that what you're requesting?
Yeah. Request that we, we send it to the Environmental and Franchise Utility Committee.
Okay.
Cause we'll need to, uh, Mar, Erin probably and Melanie to help us with that.
Okay, so is that a motion? I take that as a motion. Elizabeth, is that correct?
Yes, I move that we submit the assessment to the Environmental and Franchise Utility Committee.
Second.
Okay, second by Flornoy. Any other discussion? If not, please call the roll.
Esti.
Yes.
Flornoy.
Yes.
Ham.
Yes.
Rasmussen.
Yes.
Gandy.
Yes.
Two Hill.
Yes.
Great, thank you. Uh, consideration of partial release of retainage for wastewater step-two project. Uh, Stephen, Mr. Pedrick.
Yes. We had a meeting with the sewer committee here earlier. Um, and what we have today is, uh, on the step-two sewer project, believe it or not, we're getting very close to being done. Couple of years since we've started. Um, and the contractor has requested a partial release of retainage. Uh, the project is not entirely done yet, but is, the bulk of it is completed. Um, and so what we have before you here is, uh, to consider approving a partial release of retainage. By our estimate, there's about twenty-five thousand dollars worth of work remaining to complete on the project. Uh, per the specifications, we're allowed to hold two times that amount still. Um, so we're recommending, uh, still holding fifty thousand dollars worth of retainage, but releasing the, the remainder, which is three hundred and eighty-six thousand, six hundred and twenty-two dollars and thirty-three cents.
Okay.
Which is a big chunk of change.
It is. So I make the motion that we approve the release of the uh, replacement, uh, a digestive replacement retainage of three hundred and eighty-six thousand?
Six hundred and twenty-two, thirty-three.
Six hundred and twenty-two dollars and thirty-three cents.
Be step-two in the motion.
Yeah.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Been moved and seconded.
Just one thing. Uh, we won't see this bill until the next council meeting. So it'll come on the next council meeting's agenda as, in the claims.
Right, just.
Okay.
FYI.
Okay. Any other discussion, questions?
Is it necessary to amend that motion because it's not the digester replacement? We're talking about the partial release of retainage for wastewater step-two.
First step-two. Can't read the darn thing.
You, you skipped one.
Yeah.
Did we skip that one? Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
You skipped one, didn't we?
I thought we went to.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I'm so boring. You just want to skip right in.
Yeah, I was just wrong.
Wrong wording.
Wrong wording. So this is the release of the retainage.
First wastewater step-two.
For wastewater step-two and the amount of three hundred and eighty-six thousand, six hundred and twenty-two dollars and thirty-three cents. Correct? Okay, now we have it correct. Any other discussion? Now please call the roll.
Flornoy.
Yes.
Two Hill.
Yes.
Esti.
Yes.
Gandy.
Yes.
Rasmussen.
Yes.
Ham.
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you. Next action item is consideration of the aerobic digester replacement change order number one. This is a cost of seven hundred and eighty-five thousand.
No, the change order is not that amount. It is a zero-dollar change order.
Right.
Changing the dates.
But the whole thing is seven hundred and eighty-five thousand. I didn't say that right. Yeah, thank you.
So this is for a no-cost change order. Um, the reason we're bringing it from you to you is it's a substantial change in the substantial completion date. Uh, moving it from May tenth of twenty-two to November sixth of twenty-two. Um, this is the project that was delayed for a very long time due to supply issues. However, um, the materials are all on site. The contractor is working. Um, we are paid over fifty percent of, uh, the contract amount at this point. So, um, we would recommend approval of this change.
I would move that we approve aerobic digester replacement change order number one.
Second.
Second by Gandy? Is that correct? Okay. Any other questions? Now please call the roll.
Flornoy.
Yes.
Gandy.
Yes.
Rasmussen.
Yes.
Ham.
Yes.
Two Hill.
Yes.
Esti.
Yes.
Great. Uh, next action item, consideration of agreement with Department of Natural Resources for the SWG bat project.
Um, so this was a grant that, um, Cassidy Robinson, the local forester, helped the city apply for. And, um, it is for removal of invasive species, uh, wooded species like honeysuckle uh, from the wooded area on the northeast corner of Pleasant Lake. The city-owned ground in that area. And so, um, it's called a bat grant because the removal of the invasive species helps native trees grow that are a better habitat for, um, the bats, which. So the, um, agreement that is in front of you, uh, provides for a not-to-exceed amount of twenty-three thousand, three hundred and eight dollars in grant. This covers a hundred percent of the cost of the bid that we received from, and I can't think of the contractor's name off the top of my head right now, but it does cover a hundred percent of the cost. So there's no, um, cost on our end. The work will occur over the next two years, um, coming in and doing a very large, uh, removal, coming back the following, the next year, doing additional removal. Um, the only obligation the city has is to not purposefully destroy the habitat in the next ten years and to do a report, um, a grant, uh, every year during the, um, next two years, uh, showing what work has been done.
Melanie, would the, have a biologist do a bat head count?
Uh, no, but I think Katie Anderson has volunteered.
Well, it'd be nice to know if we had increase in population.
Um, I would have to ask Cassidy that specific.
Might take a few years after the clearing has been done.
Yes, yes, it, it's a long-range plan, but I'm not aware of any, um, counting that's being taken part of this grant. Now, there might be something in the region that's happening because there is work that's being hap, that's happening with, um, Jefferson County Park as well, under the same grant program. Um, but I can, uh, I'll have to get back to you on that.
Is that Cassidy's responsibility to help with those reports or is that our city?
So it is, um, city, the city's responsibility, but, um, Cassidy's going to have to tell us whether, uh, the work was done properly or not. So, um, we'll work together on her and getting that out yearly.
So I would move that we approve the agreement with the Department of Natural Resources for the SWG bat project.
Second.
Second by Esti. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any other discussion? I'm not volunteering either, just to let you know.
For counting the bats. I've had one in my hair before. It's kind of creepy. Um, okay, so no other discussion or questions. Call the roll, please. Flornoy.
Yes.
Esti.
Yes.
Rasmussen.
Yes.
Gandy.
Yes.
Two Hill.
Yes.
Ham.
Yes.
Great, thank you. Next action item, consideration to set public hearing for the disposal of city assets for Monday, September twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-two at seven PM.
Um, so I ta, although tonight we're just setting the public hearing, um, what is attached to the agenda is a list of all of the items that will be considered. Uh, these are items from the former DOT buildings. And as stated in the memo, um, all city departments have looked through the buildings to see if there is anything that they, um, that are of use to those uh, departments. Um, and we're left with stuff that doesn't really have a value to anyone, um, in the city. And, uh, from personal experience, I know that metal desks are very hard to sell on pre-cycle. So we are recommending that a large portion of this be given back to the community through, um, the Habitat for Humanity Restore as well as the well of Fairfield. Um, there were, are some of the, some items that we would recommend selling. Uh, they will have their own timeframe and, um, uh, bids or, um, uh, sale through an auction. Uh, so the, at, the setting the date is, um, just to get rid of the property, but, um, I thought I'd go the extra step in letting you know how we intend to get rid of it.
I would certainly move for approval to do so.
Second.
Moved by Rasmussen, second by Gandy. Any other discussion? Now please call the roll.
Rasmussen.
Yes.
Gandy.
Yes.
Ham.
Yes.
Two Hill.
Yes.
Esti.
Yes.
Flornoy.
Yes.
Okay, next resolution, consideration of tax abatement application for two oh five East Briggs Avenue. This is Jessica Ledger-Kalen or Sharma LLC.
I would move approve a tax payment application for two oh five East Briggs Avenue.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to, uh, approve this tax abatement application. Any other discussion? Now please call the roll.
Flornoy.
Yes.
Two Hill.
Yes.
Ham.
Yes.
Esti.
Yes.
Gandy.
Yes.
Rasmussen.
Yes.
Thank you. Um, next is a public hearing on the matter, assessment schedule for the stop and curb box repairs. So I will open the public hearing. Is there anyone that wants to speak to this? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and we will move on to the resolution, consideration of scheduled assessments for the stop curb box repairs. So you have a list there?
I would move we approve the schedule of assessments for the stop curb box repairs.
Moved by Flornoy.
The second.
Second by Rasmussen. Any other discussion? Now please call the roll.
Flornoy.
Yes.
Rasmussen.
Yes.
Two Hill.
Yes.
Ham.
Yes.
Gandy.
Yes.
Esti.
Yes.
Okay, approved unanimously. Uh, ordinance twelve, twelve, consideration of increased to solid waste collection rates. This is the third and final reading. Um, this is moving from eight dollars and fifty-six cents to eight dollars and seventy-eight cents.
So moved?
Second.
Moved by Gandy, second by Two Hill. Any other discussion? Now please call the roll.
Gandy.
Yes.
Two Hill.
Yes.
Flornoy.
Yes.
Ham.
Yes.
Rasmussen.
Yes.
Esti.
Yes.
Ordinance twelve, thirteen, consideration of increased to single-stream cycling collection rates. This is the third and final reading, going from four dollars and fifty-six cents to four dollars and seventy-eight cents.
So moved?
Second.
Moved by Gandy, second by Two Hill. Any other discussion? Please call the roll.
Gandy.
Yes.
Two Hill.
Yes.
Rasmussen.
Yes.
Esti.
Yes.
Flornoy.
Yes.
Ham.
Yes.
Ordinance twelve, fourteen, consideration of implementation of inflation surcharge on solid waste user accounts. Again, this is a third and final reading and this is a dollar fifty-five. This will be reviewed next May.
So moved?
Second.
Moved by Gandy, second by Two Hill. Any other discussion? Now please call the roll.
Gandy.
Yes.
Two Hill.
Yes.
Rasmussen.
Yes.
Ham.
Yes.
Esti.
Yes.
Flornoy.
Yes.
Okay, ordinance twelve, fifteen, consideration of amendment to non-conforming lots and uses. This is the second reading. I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing just in case. This is newer. This is my second reading. Now, I'll close the public hearing and, um, council.
So moved?
Moved by Gandy.
Second.
Second by Two Hill. Any other discussion? Now please call the roll.
Gandy.
Yes.
Two Hill.
Yes.
Flornoy.
Yes.
Ham.
Yes.
Rasmussen.
Yes.
Esti.
Yes.
Ordinance twelve, sixteen, consideration of amendment to chapter twenty definitions and general provisions. This again is a second reading. And I, there's no one here to open the public hearing for, so go ahead, council.
So moved?
Moved by Gandy?
Why quit now?
Second.
Second by Two Hill. Any questions or discussion? Now please call the roll.
Gandy.
Yes.
Two Hill.
Yes.
Flornoy. Rasmussen.
Yes.
Esti.
Yes.
Ham.
Yes.
Great, thank you. Ordinance twelve, seventeen, consideration of amendment to zoning setbacks. This is again the second reading.
So moved?
Moved by Gandy.
Second.
Second by Two Hill. Any other questions or discussion? Now please call the roll.
Gandy.
Yes.
Two Hill.
Yes.
Esti.
Yes.
Flornoy.
Yes.
Ham.
Yes.
Rasmussen.
Yes.
Thank you. Considerate, or ordn, ordinance twelve, eighteen, again, second reading, consideration of amendment to pedestrian crossrocks.
I'm not sure. No, no. So moved. So moved, so moved.
Moved by Gandy, second by Two Hill. Any discussion?
We can discuss it for half an hour.
If not, call the roll.
Well, Gandy.
Yes.
Two Hill.
Yes.
Flornoy.
Yes.
Ham.
Yes.
Rasmussen.
Yes.
Esti.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Under the mayor's report, um, I want to just mention that, uh, I am looking for beautification committee uh, members. So if you have an interest in that committee, please let me know. Um, I have two board appointments hap, appointments, housing task force appointment. Nick Graham, he was the last one that I didn't have a confirmation on at our last meeting. So he now has confirmed he will be a good representative of the manufacturers. So I would appreciate, uh, a vote of confidence and approve him.
So moved.
Thank you. So second?
Second.
Second by Gandy. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Thank you. And then volunteer committee appointment, Deb Carlson, she's replacing Jan Larson.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Moved by Rasmussen, second by Flornoy. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Thank you. Um, EMA report. So this is unrelated to what we talked about before. EMA report. So this is unrelated to what we talked about before. Okay, hang on just a sec. This was related to our last meeting that we held on August sixteenth. There really wasn't a lot of business, but a couple um, things coming up. And by the way, um, Brett will be here the first of October to kind of. Do a review of last year and talk about what's going forward, but I'll give you a little snippet of a couple things. Uh, one of the things that's been discussed is having our sirens be connected directly to the. Weather service so that the sirens automatically go off and there's no human intervention to have to push those sirens. That will be discussed again later at EMA and maybe come to council. Uh, to discuss how to fund that further. It is a twenty-five thousand dollar setup and a sixteen hundred dollar annual maintenance. So again, uh, we'll probably hear something about that from Brett, but it'll be a longer discussion later.
You said he'd be here on October first?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, but this may come up and during more budget, closer to budget time, but I would assume he might mention it next time. Uh, we did get a new trailer for equipment for emergency management. He's now has. Uh, the decals on it, so that's all ready to go.
Whose truck is he using? He doesn't have a truck, does he?
Yeah, he does.
He has a truck, yes.
Where did he get that?
Well, he's had it for a while, but it's probably getting closer to the end of his.
Maybe that's where.
Cycle.
Okay, he wants a new truck.
Oh, well, at some point he'll need one, yes. Just to let you know, he did line of duty death training in Henry County. That didn't sound like very much fun. But um, he mentioned that uh, Marshy School invited him and Chief Thomas out. And they did uh, some training out there and discussion with administrators and teachers. They had a good meeting. Uh, Jefferson County Fair has has uh, done an emergency preparedness plan with the help of Brett, so that's ready to go. So that's all good. He is getting ready to go to a Homeland Security Conference up in the Ankeny area here in October. And here in Fairfield, we will be doing a. Uh, economic recovery plan. It's November seventeenth. And a lot of members of the community, the way I understand it, will be invited to this. So this is for like a major disaster, so you may be called upon to participate as well. But we'll hear more about that soon. I think he's getting out those invitations very soon, so those are things coming up.
Just a quick question.
Yes.
The emergency emergency management plan that we looked at a couple years ago, is that from REMA?
No, I. I don't recall where I got that to put it together. He he has gotten a copy of it and he's renewed it.
Do we have a plan for Jefferson County?
There is something in place.
Y- yes.
Yes. Reading through all this chapter material.
Yeah.
I came across that piece of information that they.
Yeah, and so and he's been working with different entities in the community, like working with the hospital, working with nursing homes, working with the schools. So um, I'm sure he'll go over that when when hopefully, when it comes in October, he can mention that, yeah. So I think we took that from another city, as I recall.
I think so.
As a template to get started.
Yep.
Yeah, I don't remember which city, but, okay, so that was what we what was discussed at emergency management. Uh, Great Places Grant. So to give you a little background, there were some other grants that were available um, through the state, which. Terry Baker was looking at and we met with Aaron. And we also brought in former mayor Ed Malloy to discuss some of those opportunities. What we really discovered through looking at how those grants were structured, particularly the last one, there was called Creative Place Making. We were talking about a five million dollar project, which we don't have. We have a lot of smaller projects that we'd like to do. Or that have been talked about in the last few years. So we put together. In this narrative, some of these things that are possibilities. So the way the Great Places Grant works is first off, it's in our downtown area. So we, again, pulled together from a lot of the studies I've done the last few years, plus some projects that. We know are kind of in progress. And so we have, you know, this, the Fairfield Arts and Convention Center. Central Park and the New Armory, which is being worked on privately for a musical and cultural arts education venue. Which is really exciting. So these are kind of some cornerstones and we wanna be able to. You know, have things flow in between those in our downtown. All it basically, it's all about revitalization. So if you read through this, uh, we've put together, uh, and Terry did a great job of putting together all the things that we talked about. We had a whole laundry list of possibilities, uh, added a few things other than what's that we had talked about previously. And um, so a narrative will, if upon your support, will go in by September twentieth. They'll read through these narratives and then if you're invited to actually apply, they'll let us know. It's at that time, we would really sift through some of these ideas and really come to the table with what we can afford. Uh, you know, what we can't afford, what's reasonable. We do think, you know, we we have some private money for matching funds with some of the other things that are going on. So again, we would give you more detail then. Um, and really flesh out some of those details and costs and uh, you know, request any money if there is any to be requested from the city. But we would like the opportunity to go ahead and send in the narrative and see if we get asked to apply.
Pre-screen to see if.
Yes.
Even running for.
Yes. And one of the questions, and I've been playing phone tag with the gentleman at the state of. He said, you know, you can apply for up to three projects. Well, we don't know if this project and this project can be put together or they're completely separate projects. So that's a question that's unknown yet and we're, like I say, we're trying to figure out. So. If it's okay with you, we'd like to send in the narrative for the September twentieth. Anybody have any issue with that?
I need a motion and a vote. I'd make that motion. I have a question. Who wrote the uh, the Great Places Grant, or at least the.
The what you see here, Terry wrote.
Okay.
Yeah, Terry put this together.
Alright, thank you.
Yep. And we did have a narrative, by the way, from twenty nineteen that Ed Malloy wrote. Thinking that around that time, there was gonna be an application to Great Places and that never happened. So, you know, we've been kind of using that also as a template with some of his ideas and. So it's kind of exciting. I think it's more than exciting, actually. I'm hoping that we will get asked to apply. So I think it's a great opportunity.
I'll second.
Okay. Any other discussion? So we have a motion by Flornoy, a second by To Hill. If not, uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Great, thank you. Uh, last thing I wanted to mention was I'm gonna do a town hall with the Water and Wastewater Department supervisors. Steve Redinger and Sean Worley. That will be on September twenty-sixth here in City Hall at five thirty. Hopefully, we will be live that night as well, so people can ask questions on the fly, but hopefully, we'll have a few attendees here. We're gonna talk about what's happening at the water department, um, what they're looking at, how do we get our water. Probably talk about testing, those kind of things. We and we'll talk about wastewater and all the new things out there and um. What not to put down your sinks and toilets? So should be fun. Okay, um, committee and board reports, personnel. Oh, no, wait a minute, we gotta go to city attorney first, sorry.
Just one thing, but it'll take a couple minutes. I promise. Weston McKee has been working with me and he's picking up on the new job. It's, it is a full-time job that he's looking at. Uh, he's probably working on fifty different projects. One at a time, but uh, there are a lot of different kinds of nuisance situations around town. Uh, but that's his focus. Uh, we've already had him participate in the trial on one of them and. Surprisingly, quite a bit of it got cleaned up after the trial. It's still not ideal, but it's changed. So um, I think Weston is enthused about his job. Um, there's a lot he's got to learn. Uh, but aside from reporting on that, what's happening is I'm seeing some of these fifty or sixty things on a list. That I know some of them have then been there before, they've come up to court before and. Sometimes they get fixed and sometimes it's just an ongoing thing and there is a variety of landlord problems that. Some people are more motivated than others and so forth. But what I'm seeing is that we've got. About a half a dozen different ways of dealing with this. We had an afternoon with planning office and Weston. Some of the other people from City Hall about all of our alternatives. Uh, usually, we just use misdemeanor citations and something we call civil infractions, civil side suits to get somewhere up in court. But uh, we've got. Alternative classifications. Uh, most of what Weston works on is ten to twelve. Defined nuisances under our nuisance ordinance. We also have unsafe structures. We have dilapidated. Uh, and uh, basically unhygienic uh, facility statute. Uh, we've got public health hazard uh, along the same line. We've got fire hazard ordinance. Uh, and those involve a variety of different kinds of owners of the structure. Some of them are well-intentioned people. It just can't keep it up. Uh, we've also got an issue with squatters, vagrants and. People who choose to be homeless. Uh, and this is awkward to the point where I've had a couple of complaints at my office. From restaurant owners in town about people that literally are coming in to cool down. Ask for a drink of water, sit there for two hours and basically it's a problem for other customers that come in. That become uncomfortable. And and in a way, uh, there's a humanitarian way to look at that, but. Aside from sure, give them a glass of water and encourage them to be comfortable, but then they can't stay there all day. It's not their new nest. That problem uh, is amplified by some of the things that Scott Vaughn and I ran into the last couple of years. And Weston is gonna run into with the volume he is and that is, we have some people in town that consistently, year after year. Their places fall into disrepair, uh, or they're infested or they have vermin and they have other kinds of problems. That the health board gets reports on too. Uh, and our problem is, and I know Scott and I, in the last two winters. We had some people that we could have red-tagged their house, we could have given notice, twenty-four hours, you have to be out of here. This is unfit for habitation. We started looking around for what can we do when we displace somebody? And the town doesn't have any last resorts that I can see, and I think that's something maybe when we have our fall workshop with the council. That uh, we stick a twenty-minute or half-hour discussion of that on the agenda. Because we probably need to reach out uh, to the charitable groups in the community. We still have a couple hundred of them on a list. But uh, we don't have what we used to have as far as backdoor at the Presbyterian church with the minister giving. Somebody a couple of uh, tags to go out and spend a night or two at the motel and get a decent meal. Uh, that used to be what there was for what I call last resort, but. I think this is something we're gonna have to look at at the same time that we go ahead if we're gonna intensify the enforcement on some of the nuisances. To get some things fixed and cleaned up, we're gonna displace some people. So uh, we have to recognize that there is that consequence. It's not something that we wanna be mean to people about, but it is something that. I don't think we have an answer for it right now. So if we put that on the list for things to talk about with the council when that comes up, that's not that far away.
Can you give us an idea on the or an estimate on the number of homeless people in town now approximately?
I don't know. I got a couple people that knock on my back door and ask me if I've got cans.
I saw that the Fed said the other day and I and I asked the employee, you know, why he had a bag next to my floor. They thought he was homeless, but he just came in and hung out there for a while. Like, is it ten, twenty?
Oh, no, it's a lot.
Hundred?
It it isn't something new. Uh, when I was county attorney, we had uh, we got a grant one time. Uh, and the the problem is that uh, we had at that time, we had an influx of people that were. Uh, being uh. I guess invited to come to town, uh, but at the same time, there really wasn't. Uh, arrangements to completely house everybody that showed up for the invitation. And I know we had uh, some Southeast Asia families and so forth that we had five families living in one house, that kind of thing. So there's um, what you call lack of sufficient housing. And then there's other people that are, like you say, they're living on the street, uh, or they're living in their car. Yeah, I've had people call and ask me if there's something we can do about somebody living in their car. Well. Yeah, we can try to help them, but uh, what else do you do? Uh, our vagrancy ordinances in Iowa are a lot different than they were when I was in law school fifty years ago. They've uh, right now, um, a lot of them have just been taken off the books. It's like old blue laws. They just uh, uh, felt like they uh, weren't necessary anymore, but I think probably the last two or three years. They've become necessary more than ever, so it's a good question. I don't have the answer for it now, but I'm sure they're with us.
Yeah, I've heard and I've asked around for different different areas. I've, at one point, somebody told me eight or ten. Uh, most recently, uh, in fact, last Friday, I heard there's probably eighteen or twenty in the downtown area that they are aware of. Um, the well has told me probably fifty or sixty. Now, that might include people who couch surf, so. You know, I guess that you can determine how you how you wanna define it, but they're in and out of those elements, but some of these other people aren't. I've heard one person living in a storage unit down here in Burlington, um, also garages where there's several. Mattresses set up in a garage in the in the near downtown area. I haven't seen it myself, but this other person has, so. Again, we're not really sure. Um, no doubt, some of these people have some mental health issues. And uh, you know, that's playing into it as well, so.
Weston has taken some pictures of some of the uh, properties that uh, we're looking at as far as citing as nuisance. And uh, I can think of at least two pictures where the garage had uh, mattress and other things on the floor. And obviously, somebody had been nesting in there. Uh, and I, you know, I think it's temporary kinds of things, but I think there's. Just enough of that stuff that's open around that people. It's a resort for them. They can get there and uh, at least use it for a while until somebody is made to clean that up. But uh, right now, it's a different kind of problem as far as. Where you do the right thing for displaced people versus the places themselves that need to be cleaned up. So anyway, we we can talk more.
Yeah, thanks, John. We'll add that to the work session. Okay, committee and board reports, personnel.
Personnel, sorry, switching gears. Tonight, we met briefly um, on recommendation from our workmen's comp. They uh, are advising uh, that we would have a a work policy. In place in case someone were to have um, like a serious accident or health issues. That would um, incapacitate them for a length of time and then um. What that would look like to give them um, smaller temporary work as they. Phase back into the working situation with us or what it would come to if. They found out that their capacity would no longer um, be viable. So uh, it was recommended then that we are going to see to it that you all have a copy of this to read it. By the next um, meeting and uh, we felt that there's a lot already of this policy. Happening. We just didn't have it in writing and that's pretty much what we're doing is just putting it in writing for ourselves, for the employees. So we all are on the same page, so we all know what would follow through when that would happen. So you can expect it with the next um.
Is not some of that light out in the handbook?
Next council meeting.
Council meeting, yeah, notes.
Complete enough.
It's formalizing most of it.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
In the notes, so.
Gotcha.
Just wanted to make you aware of it.
Great, thanks, Judy. Uh, water and sewer sewer utilities?
Uh, we met tonight. We had two things on the agenda. Uh, the first one was the the consideration of the partial release of the retainage. Which we've already discussed tonight. Um, and then. Next meeting, we'll bring, we'll also bring forward um, uh, an option for. There's been some um. Grass growing issues with um, part of that project that the grass has not come in to fruition this year at all because of the conditions. Um, and what we're gonna have to do to uh, to make that right. So we had a few options and um. I I I think we're gonna recommend, or we are gonna recommend one, it was probably the cheaper of the options, but what that we're gonna have to either to work down ourselves next spring. Or we will contract somebody to do it, but I think we're gonna discuss that and that'll come up at the next meeting on the agenda. The other thing that we had was. Um, the other thing that we had was, um, uh, motorsports. What I?
Sun and fun.
Sun and fun motorsports, thank you. Uh, south of town, uh, when Access Energy was doing some work down there, they, uh, cut into one of their water lines. So water was leaking between the, the meter and the road, I guess.
Between the meter and the building.
And the meter in the building, so, um, and they had an excessive water bill. Um, Access Energy has agreed to pay the water portion of the bill. Um, the sewer portion, um, since they haven't been there but three months so far, um, we don't, we don't have a year to go back on, but their, their water usage has been very minimal. They have five employees, I think, in one bathroom, so their, their water usage is pretty small there. Um, but the, the sewer portion of the bill is seven hundred and sixty dollars and thirty-two cents and it was determined that it never did go down the sewer. So we recommend that we, we, um, refund them the seven hundred and sixty, or waive the seven hundred and sixty dollar and thirty-two cents sewer fee.
Make the motion, go ahead now. Make the motion to refund the?
Seven hundred.
Seven hundred and sixty dollars and thirty-two cents to Sun and the Fun Motorsports.
I'll second.
Okay, moving second, Ed, to, uh, refund that fee, seven sixty-three-two. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Thank you, motion carried. Is that it, Tom?
That's it.
Okay, administrator and department reports?
Uh, well, I guess we'll address the setting trick-or-treating night. Um, after talking to the police chief, uh, we've decided that we would recommend that we set, uh, trick-or-treat for October thirty-first from five-thirty to seven-thirty. Um, we just need council's approval for that. It is, actually, it is, it's a Monday night, which is on the actual Halloween day.
Thirty-first.
Yep, the thirty-first.
Make the motion that we set Halloween celebration for October thirty-first, five-thirty to seven-thirty.
Second. There's celebration.
Second by Estee. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign.
Your case.
Great, thank you.
And then the, uh, the fiscal, the final fiscal report, uh, that I reported, I was rather happy with how our finances ended up with the end of the year. Um, I don't know if you have any other questions regarding that report, but for the sake of time, I'm not gonna go too far into it unless you have any questions.
Except the construction and expenses.
No, there were, the fire department actually spent a little extra too, but there were, but yeah, administration and council spent too much money. Which is, which, quite honestly, that becomes our, our throw, fallback when something needs to be expensed out somewhere. We end up throwing it in administration or council just sometimes because we don't have another place to put it. So that's, it's not that we actually overspent money in the council or administration line items, but we needed to put something somewhere, so that's how it ended up being that way.
So overall, for the public, we came in and, and under budget and our revenues were over budget, so.
Yep.
Yee-haw. That's good news.
So it should be, yes.
All right.
We try.
Okay, that is it. So I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So moved.
Oh, God, dead long. All reckon by Estee. All those in favor say aye. Say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign.
Three more hours and we'd be at our school board meeting.
Meeting adjourned.
We don't need to do that.
And we're out by nine.